Good evening. The time is now 7:05 and I would like to call the Boyl City Council meeting in order at this time. Can we have roll call, please?
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
Second item is Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. We don't, we have none at this time. Item 4A, item four is Public Hearings. 4A, please.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a self-service storage facility in a C3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 1430 Division Street. There was a Plan Commission recommendation for approval 5-0.
Thank you. Ms. Christiansen, please.
Sure. Jeff Aylman has applied for the conditional use for the self-storage facility on 1430 Division Street. A preliminary site plan and building of elevations were included in the packet. It's proposed to be constructed in two phases with Phase One consisting of 23 units in the proposed Building A, which is 4,600 square feet, and 22 units and 288 square feet of office space in the proposed Building A, which is approximately 4,696 square feet. An additional 20 units will be added to proposed Building B in the future for total 65 units, and that addition is 3,992 square feet. The proposed storage unit doors are planned to be oriented north-south so they will not face the street. The proposed facility will be surrounded by a fence. We'll have one gated entrance on Division Street, and because the real property line is adjacent to a residential zoning district, a dense landscape offer will be required along the real property line in addition to the other required landscaping. Charter, well, this went out to all the city's review agents, but Charter noted that the proposed driveway may not have adequate clearance below an existing line that is attached to the aligned energy utility poles, and if there's a conflict and the line cannot be elevated, the applicant's responsible for the cost of replacing the poles with taller poles. This was noticed as a public hearing before the Plan Commission meeting, and a couple neighbors did come out and speak, and I guess Jeff Aylman did also go out on-site and met with some of the neighbors. I think he was out on-site and they just all kind of came around and discussed some drainage issues, which he had agreed to address, and then the Plan Commission did add as an additional condition, just to ensure that it actually occurred. And following that, and the neighbors did indicate that they were in support of the project, they were happy with Jeff Aylman, they felt he would be responsive to their drainage needs, and they were happy about the proposed development, and so Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are that the conditional use permit authorizes a self-service storage facility consisting of 65 storage units and up to 300 square feet of office space in two buildings on the property located at 1430 Division Street. Motor vehicles, trailers, equipment, and other items may not be stored outside. This facility shall be completely surrounded by a fence, and the driveway gate shall allow for emergency access. Prior to beginning construction, the applicant shall submit site and architectural plans for staff review and approval. If the existing utility pole near the proposed driveway must be replaced with a taller pole to avoid clearance conflicts, the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of replacement. The applicant shall ensure that the existing drainage issues are addressed, and then the standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process, and that staff may approve minor changes administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing for Item 4A, Resolution Authorizing Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Self-Storage Facility in a C3 Community Commercial District for the Property Located at 1430 Division Street. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A? Anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by John, second by Haines, Council discussion. Council de force?
I have a question for Ms. Christiansen. Were there any other questions or concerns that were raised by the residents besides the drainage issue, or was that just the primary concern they had?
That was the only concern that they had.
Okay, and you did say that they felt the owner's plan to address that they felt was satisfactory?
Yes, and they, actually, the condition is added to require that anyway. But apparently, there's existing issues with drainage on the property behind, the house behind, and on the adjacent business, and they're going to work together to resolve those issues, and as part of the site plan and architectural plans, we will get a drainage plan, which the city engineer will review, so we'll ensure that those are met.
Wonderful, thank you.
Anything else? Any other council questions, comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes 7-0. Item five is Citizens Participation. I did not receive any forms at this time, but if there's any citizen that would like to speak, this is the opportunity. We ask that you come forward, state your name and your address, state your concern. Council will not usually act on your concern, but we will appropriate it to the proper department. Is there any citizen that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I would like to close the Citizens' Participation. Part of the agenda, Item Six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw request, in which event, the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any councilor who would like anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda is Items 6A through 6D. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by DeForest, seconded by Bench. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing passes 7-0. Item seven is Ordinances. Item 7A, please.
Item 7A is a proposed ordinance to remove the one-hour parking time limit on College Street between Bushnell Street and Chapin Street. There is a request to have a first reading and to suspend the rules for a second reading. The Traffic Review Committee recommended approval 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. Botts, please.
This portion of College Street was, I guess, for the better terms, said reconstructed along the west or eastern side to allow angle parking, and that's a side that previously had a one-hour time limit. The college no longer desires to have a parking limit along that side of the street and asks that the parking limit be removed, and with that, the Traffic Review considered it and felt that was reasonable, and are asking the council to consider removing that parking limit of one hour on that side of the street.
Hey, thank you. Is there a motion and a second? Let me rephrase that. This is to suspend the rules, I'm sorry. It's been motioned by John, and seconded by Dance to suspend the rules. Now to the merits. Motion by Dance, is there a second?
Excuse me, we need a vote on the first one.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I was on the road. Okay, so, on, to suspend the rules, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none is 7-0. Been motioned by Bench, seconded by Noonan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you for your help in that matter. Item 7B, please.
Item 7B is a proposed ordinance to remove the no-parking designation for Chapin Street between College Street and Church Street. There is a request to have the first reading and suspend the rules for the second reading. The Traffic Review Committee recommended approval 5-0.
Mr. Botts, please.
Chapin Street was changed to a one-way street as part of the taper of the College Street redevelopment with the parking, and with that, there's no longer a need to have as wide a driving aisle down that street for two-way traffic. And so, with that, the college has asked that the no-parking designation on the south side of the street be removed to allow people to park on the south side of the street. And we look at the side of the street with parking on both sides and a drive aisle down the middle. We conferred with the fire department, and they felt it was reasonable enough to have, there's enough width for their equipment to get through. The only challenges are, you know, in the winter for snow removal, if they don't get their cars out the streets, you know, that'll create some issues, but we believe that there's enough space for safe passageway, and with that, we ask the council to consider removing the no-parking on the south side of Chapin Street in that block.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to suspend the rules? So, motion by DeForest, seconded by Haines to suspend the rule. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none is 7-0. Now to the merits.
Move approval on the merits, Mr. President.
Motion by Van de Bogart, seconded by Haines. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Item 7C, please.
Item 7C is a proposed ordinance amending Section 1313 Perron I of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit to change heavy traffic route designations. There is a request to have the first reading and suspend the rules for a second reading. The Traffic Review Committee recommended approval 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. Botts?
The city has a designated truck route layout that's approved by the City Council and in the special index of locations, and after some discussion about the pertinence of the map and how updated it was, it was reviewed, and we found that there's a number of locations that we wanted to remove from that truck route map, and there's another number of locations that we wanted to add to it as a result of the new construction activities. And on the report, it lists out the locations that we'd like to have removed, Sherlin Avenue from Prairie to Jerry Thomas Parkway, Sherlin Avenue from State Street to the West City Limits, Colby Street from State Street to Park, and Manchester Road from Dearborn to State Line. We felt that these locations were no longer needed to be designated as truck routes because there are no reasons for trucks to be going through those areas, other than if you're making local deliveries or going to a local business, you have the rights to do that, but as a through truck route, it's not necessary. And then we wanted to update the map by adding Willowbrook Road from 81 to the State Line, and then Cranston Road from the railroad tracks out to the Gateway Boulevard, and then Gateway Boulevard from County Trunk X up to Highway Route 67. And that way, it gets all the locations where we expect, and we encourage the truck traffic to go too. And that's what we were trying to get on this map, is to update it so that, and this will also get shared with the state so they can share with the trucking industry of locations where there are through truck routes. And we ask the council to consider adapting and changing this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to suspend the rules? Motion by Haines, is there a second to suspend the rules? Second by Noonan. Council Van de Bogart?
Is there a need for haste on this, and do we get any feedback from any of the other individuals either along these ways or businesses on these truck routes? I haven't heard anything at the Traffic Review Committee level, but do we expect any feedback on this?
We have, the only location I really kind of drove this was on Manchester Road, where the route goes through basically a residential neighborhood, and that's one of the areas we're removing the through truck route, so that should try to help that situation out, try to reduce the amount of trucks that can go through that way. The other locations, the businesses that may have needed truck traffic at the time are no longer there, and so that's why we're removing all those locations from the map. The new ones we're adding are, of course, you know, that's where we want trucks to go through because it's in the industrial park and the Gateway Boulevard and the Gateway Business Park and those areas. We don't foresee any objections to make any changes.
There they go. Thank you. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Now to the merits. Motion by Haines, there's second, seconded by John's. Counselor comments, concerns, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes 7-0. Thank you. Item eight is Appointments. The undersigned Kevin Lee, Kevin Lee, duly-elected president of the Boyl City Council, subject to confirmation by the Boyl City Council, does hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancy and terms indicated below. Set appointments being pursued to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held on November 8th, 2010. On the Landmarks Commission, Steve Valmer, 2611 Chasworth, replacing John Doomer as the East Side Rep to a term expiring October 31st, 2013. To the Traffic Review Committee, Jason Dowd, 2052 Bootmaker, replacing Emo Benz to a term expiring September 31st, 2012. Excuse me. There is also vacancies on the following committee. Appointment Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. Board of Ethics has one vacancy for former city councilor. Board of Review, one vacancy for residents, two vacancies, one as an alternate for residents. Community Development Authority, one vacancy for resident. Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistant Council, four vacancies for residents with disabled plates. Landmarks Commission has three vacancies for residents. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for youth representative, and one vacancy for residents. And Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Noonan, is there a second? Second by John's. All those in favor say aye. Council, sorry.
Sorry.
Council de force.
Question. I've just been noticing, since I've been in this chair for almost three years now, that we continue to have numerous vacancies on the disabled parking enforcement assistance, and I'm just wondering if at some point the staff could report to us what outreach activities they're trying to do to make sure that we fill those vacancies. I don't know if the staff meeting time or place is prohibitive for residents with disabled plates, or if they've been reaching out to disability advocacy groups, or it just, it concerns me because every single city council meeting, we see that these vacancies are there, so I would just request that we have a report from that on staff, whether it be informal or formal. Thank you.
Okay, anybody, anything else? It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes, and they will be properly notified. Item nine, Council Activities and Upcoming Events. Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate one of Boyd's favorite daughters, Stephanie Cleck, on winning an Emmy in the last couple of weeks. She is a great talent and a great friend, and she brings great honor to our city. And her program, if you don't have, haven't had a chance to see it, Discover Wisconsin, speaks volumes of her dedication and efforts to bring interest and appreciation to our great state.
Counselor John's?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the great honor last week of watching my husband bag up all of our leaves and watched him do it and watched our city haul them away for free, so just wanted to say thank you for that.
Counselor Haines?
Nothing, ma'am.
Counselor DeForest?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone about our great tradition in our city for our lighted holiday parade, which is right after Thanksgiving, so it always manages to be absolutely freezing cold, and of course, I'm sure this will be no different, but just dress warmly and bring your hot chocolate, and I'm really looking forward to seeing everyone downtown right after Thanksgiving for the lighted holiday parade. Thank you.
Counselor Dance?
Nothing. Nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing as well. Item 10, City Manager's Presentation, Update of Snow Removal Program. Mr. Botts? Another timely report after Counselor DeForest says it's going to be cold after Thanksgiving, and I was thinking, I was thinking it's going to be 70 and 80 degrees for the rest of the year, you know?
I'm not the bearer of bad news. It just gets kind of snow in Minneapolis, not in Beloit. Well, we would like to update the council and the community on the snow removal programs like we do every year. Just want to remind people about several things that occur. As far as sidewalks, it's the property owner's responsibility to remove the snow within 48 hours at the end of the snowstorm. If not, there may be someone coming knocking on the door with some information and tells them they need to do that. Also, moving snow, it is against the city policy, against the ordinance, to take snow and move it from your property into the street. We always have issues where people will hire a private snowplow company to clean out their driveways, and they like to deposit it in the street. Well, that's also illegal. They can't push it across the street with the permission of the property owner across the street. They can't just push it over there without permission. So, if someone were to call you and complain that the guy across the street is pushing snow into my yard, and he doesn't have permission, that's also illegal, and it can be reported, and we can get that taken care of, because I imagine the guy who hired the guy to move the snow wouldn't mind to get that fined. Also, snow emergencies, we'll do every effort possible to get the information out as soon as we can. We rely primarily on snow reports to give us some sort of indication of when we expect the snowfalls to come, and we'll try to give the community as much notice as possible when we expect to see this, but if we're going to get a snow dump, let's say, you know, three inches or more, most likely, we'll be calling snow emergencies so that people will have time to remove their vehicles from the streets and get them into driveways or in public parking areas. Also, I've placed on your desk and it'll be on the websites with all the other information, our locations around town where people can park their vehicles during a snow emergency, so that they'll be in public parking lots and areas designated for parking during snow emergencies. So you can, they'll be able to take those vehicles to those locations, that way they won't be ticketed for leaving them on the streets. And also, when a snow emergency is declared, people need to remove their vehicles from the streets so they can remove the snow. If, every attempt will be made to try to contact the owners of the vehicles, if that contact can't be made, there's a possibility the vehicles will be towed, and if not, if they get snowed in, then most likely, they'll be ticketed. So it's very easy to tell if a vehicle was not moved during a snow event because it's either got a big pile of snow around it, or there's a pile of snow on top of the vehicle, and it's kind of hard to argue that you didn't know it was going to snow 10 inches at night, because you don't listen to the news, you don't listen to the news, you don't listen to the radio, don't read a newspaper, and all those things, it's not an excuse for not knowing when this is going to happen, because if you live in any community, most likely in Wisconsin, in Northern Illinois, they have snow ordinances that require you to remove your vehicles from the street during a snow event. So, it's not a good excuse, and those who try to plead ignorance really don't get much sympathy from our staff. Another big issue we have on an annual basis are mailboxes. If your mailbox gets hit during a snow event, you need to call 364-2929 and report it. Most likely, if the drivers realize they had hit it, they also report it to let, you know, staff know that this mailbox has been hit. But, the property owner does have some responsibility. If that mailbox was not installed according to a standard, which is at least 12 inches back from the face of the curb, and it gets hit, it's the property owner's responsibility to replace that mailbox, if it's closer to the road than that. If it's back the required amount, you know, if it's, the city will replace it if it gets hit. But if it's closer than 12 inches to the curb and it gets hit, it's the property owner's responsibility, because, or what happens a lot, the guys will move out away from the curb to make sure they avoid hitting mailboxes. Then we get the complaint that, why didn't they plow up to my mailbox? I have to go out there cleaning now because the mailman can't get to my mailbox. Well, if mailbox is placed properly back from the curb, most likely, the guys would plow to the curb, and the mailman can get to your mailbox. We're not going to send guys out to clean around mailboxes because people's mailboxes are placed improperly. The odds are, they'll probably get a nice little note from us to tell them that their mailboxes are proper, and if they don't take care of that and it gets hit, then they'll be have to replace it. So, those are calls that you will typically get, is how come they don't clean back the mics and they hit my mailbox and they aren't going to fix it? Well, that's because they weren't properly placed. But we're certainly willing to work with people as much as we can, we typically do, to try to make sure that they get their mail and get everything, but they do have some responsibility of being property owners, is make sure their stuff is in the right place. There'd be times when there are damage to yards because of snow piled up, a pile will get off into a yard and pile that up. We would like for the property owners to notify us if they see that, so we can put it on a list, and in the spring, we'll come back and make repairs to those damaged locations. But, just calling us will certainly help that out. And then, of course, the garbage collection will be on the normal garbage days unless by chance there's, the snow event causes, that we don't want to put the equipment out during the snow events. We'll send as much notice out as possible. We typically hit all the media to let everybody know what, if we're not going to pick up garbage that day, and if we don't, or if it gets snowed over, we certainly like the property owners to help us move that garbage so that we can find it the next time we come out to pick it up, because if it keeps snowing on it and you can't find it, it creates a problem when you hit it again and there's a pile of garbage that gets hit. You know, the residents, we just need people to work with us on those. And Christmas tree collection, we'll give another presentation about that here at the end of December, but we'll be collecting Christmas trees curbside after January 3rd, and it will only be for trees, and they must be free as their stands, no bags, lights, garland, or ornaments. We don't want anything with wires in it, because we grind all these trees up, and it really doesn't do our grinders good when they get stuff like wires and stands and metal stuck in those things. stuck in those things because it just, it don't grind very well. So those are things that we wanted to bring to everybody's attention. If there are any questions, we can certainly answer any.
Is there any questions? Counselor DeForest?
Can I assume that you'll be posting this in the state line news? I've seen it in there before. Is that the plan to help residents know who don't watch this quite often? So, okay, that's wonderful.
Yes, we've got a, we'll send it out, it'll be out in all the news media shortly. We just, the timing of this meeting was just such, we wanted to get out to everybody, and we hope this doesn't cause any snow to fall, but we want to make sure that everybody gets what the programs are.
Noticed you're wearing your snowman tie, or snow woman tie.
Yeah. This is ward off bad weather.
I hope so. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? None, thank you. Mr. Botts?
Thank you very much.
Item eleven, reports from boards and city officers.
Item 11A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Kettle Foods, Inc.
City manager.
And yes, I'm going to make just a couple very preliminary comments, and then Mr. Yonke returned to the city today from his commitment, and he's here, and he's going to make the formal presentation. Obviously, it's been a couple of years in this economy since the last time we had the pleasure of bringing an economic development agreement to city council, and we're particularly pleased with this one because it involves the retention and expansion of an existing business that's a relatively new corporate citizen of Beloit, but they've lived, they've been here now, been doing business about three years. So it's a great deal of pleasure that I'm able to introduce to council and the community that Kettle Foods has decided to build an expansion of their existing facility here in Beloit. And with that, I will turn to Mr. Yonke with the details.
Thank you, city manager. This item is a resolution approving a development agreement with Kettle Foods, Inc. And before I get into my remarks, so we have some guests here I'd like to introduce. First off, we have Bob Manzer, who is the plant manager at the kettle facility. Next to him is Howard Allred, who is CFO for Kettle Foods. Howard and I have spent a lot of time on the telephone and sending emails back and forth for at least, what, four months? At least, at least. The next to him is Clint Carey. Clint, I apologize, I don't know your title.
Director of Engineering.
Director of Engineering, okay. As Larry mentioned, on November 1, it was announced that Kettle Foods had chosen to expand its Beloit production facility located in the Gateway Business Park. This expansion is being driven to meet the growing demand for their potato chip products. The Beloit site was selected after Kettle Foods explored several other site options in different states. The 45,000-square-foot snack food production and distribution addition will nearly double their production capacity. Total capital investment for the project is in excess of $38 million. The project will create 100 jobs that will offer a base wage of $11.62 an hour. When fringe benefits and taxes are added, total compensation per hour is estimated at $17 an hour. Kettle intends to begin construction by May 2011 and complete construction by December 31, 2011. To bring this project to the city of Beloit, the city has offered a TID-financed pay-as-you-go direct developer incentive. This incentive will be in the amount of 35% of Kettle's annual real and personal property taxes, and will be paid out in annual installments over the course of 10 years. This amount will be reduced proportionally if Kettle creates and retains fewer than the expected 100 jobs. In addition, the city will provide a one-time, $50,000 TID-financed grant for the purpose of paying training expenses for the new employees. The State Department of Commerce is offering to support the project by allocating $1,250,000 in development opportunity zone tax credits. The state has also authorized an allocation of $21,300,000 in recovery zone facility bonds to help support financing of the project. The estimated assessed value of the new addition is in excess of $6 million and will generate over $306,000 in new tax revenue annually. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution. That concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by Noonan, is there? Seconded by Haynes. Counselor Van de Bogart.
Mr. Yonke, one of the provisions in the proposed agreement 5B talks about a forgivable loan from the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation, amount of $200,000. What are the terms of that loan, and how would that work? When would it be forgiven? When would it not be forgiven? What are the mechanics of that?
If they keep the jobs for, I believe, five years, the loan becomes forgivable at that point in time. But they will not make principal and interest payments unless they fall down beneath a certain level of jobs.
Okay, so after five years is the triggering point?
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor DeForest?
I noticed on the CDA's agenda that the recovery zone facility bond, that that will go through the community development authority. That's correct?
That is correct. It's one of the parties that's involved in the transaction.
Which other parties are involved?
State of Wisconsin Department of Commerce.
And any others besides those two?
Nope, not public.
City.
Yeah, through CDA.
Through CDA, right.
This is through the CDA, but the bond council has advised us that the program requirements will require a signature by the chief elected official of the municipal governments, and there will be a resolution on your next city council agenda authorizing council president to execute the loan documents. This is what's called a private activity loan. This was a provision in the stimulus law that was passed last year, and actually, this was the companion piece for private development to the infrastructure bonding capacity that the city was allocated by Rock County. This was the flip side of that for private development. So the city has no obligation for debt service, and none of the cost comes back to the city for this bond issue. We merely sponsor it. But there will be an action by CDA and an action required by council to execute the
Counselor DeForest, anything else?
No, I have other questions that I'll save for CDA. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Noonan.
I'd just like to thank Kettle Foods for their commitment to our community, and we look forward to working with you more in the future. Thank you for your choice.
Any other counselor comments, questions? Seeing none, there's been motion and second for approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item 12 is adjourned, is there a motion? There, motion by Johns, is there a second? Second by DeForest. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we adjourn.